Okay.
Stop talking bad about people. That's what I said, just.
Go ahead and call this meeting to order. I've asked Councilman Gantier to lead us in the prayer place.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day. Help us as we conduct the business of the city that we make wise decisions and do things that will bring honor and glory to your name. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Pledge. Attention. Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Gantier. We go to the roll call, please.
Terry Lamar.
Here.
Choya Shropshire.
Here.
Lori Bradshaw.
Here.
Hannah Brashiers.
Here.
Tyler Brown.
Here.
Charles Trammell.
Here.
Chris Gantier.
Here.
Bruce Smith.
Here.
This time we have no petitions from the audience. We'll go on to item three, the consent agenda. I'd like to poll item F. If there's anything else you'd like polled, please let me know.
E.
F and E. Okay. We have a motion for A, B, C, D, and G.
So motion.
Oh, guys, come on.
Everybody.
I got a motion from wards one and three. Let's give the motion from Choya and a second from Brashiers. Call for the vote when you're ready.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brashiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Okay, item E, approve an expenditure in the amount of $4,347 to Axon for 120 TASER seven cartridges to be paid from police equipment capital outlay account 444455424. Motion. And a motion from Choya, a second from Brashiers. That account, if I understand right, has 54684 in it and 956.
And I'm not necessarily opposed. I just thought an explanation of what it is might be a good thing to have for the citizens.
It's for yearly training. Each officer is required to fire two cartridges during that training, which is what this comes to. So, and if you're not doing the training, then you're not up to the TASER standards. And so you fall below their recommended training, which means you're up for liability.
Does they have an expiration date on those rounds also?
On the cartridges?
On cartridges, yeah.
I'm not sure. I mean, if they are.
I think they do.
I mean, we fire the ones that we have and we order new ones.
If they fall below, do they have to get re-TASERed to get re-
Yeah. Yeah, that's what's for.
I do want to clarify, too, that they have, they're not purchasing them just yet. We have a quote and this is an encumbrance, not an expenditure. We're just encumbering the funds yet. They haven't, they're not ready to place the order yet.
So, once we do have anything, we will.
Any further discussion on that? If none, we'll call for the vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brashiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Item F, approve an expenditure in the amount of $72,318.75 to Motorola Solutions for quote number 2499186, including 43 Motorola V700 body worn cameras, 43 mole mounts, 43 additional batteries, 43 in-car docking stations, three transfer stations licensing, and support to be paid from police capital outlet 444455418. This will partially be funded by a small rural tribal body worn camera matching grant that will reimburse the city in the amount of $36,159.40 to be deposited into police capital outlay account 444455418.
Motion.
Second.
Motion from Brown and a second from Gantier?
Yes, sir.
I want to note that we need to, actually need to split that a little bit differently. So let me ask you to consider, we need to do, out of account 5418, we need to do $71,384.85 and out of 444455424, 933.95.
So you said 71 what?
71,384.
Okay.
And 85 cents. And then out of 5424, we need to do 933.95.
I'll amend my motion for that.
I'll second mine then.
Sir? Questions?
Yes, what is the purpose of that split on them funds?
I can explain.
Go ahead.
So the funds, when we sit down today, look at the capital outlay accounts to see what was in what, that one was just short of the 72 that we would need. So we had to pull a little bit out of the other one. We'll reimburse that account back. But to get, where it doesn't throw an account in the negative, we had to take, you know, that parcel out of another one.
So without that reimbursement, then it would deplete that account?
The account's not depleted, but it's allocated already for things throughout the year, car leases and stuff out of that capital outlay account. So that account's not used for anything else, though.
Okay.
So minus the amount to reimburse, the small rest is going right back in that account?
Correct. The 36 or whatever the reimbursement will be will go back in.
You're being reimbursed for half of them.
Correct.
Half of it from small rural tribal body worn or matching grant. Is it, who's that actually the grant from?
It's, I don't know, it's the AG's office. Which one is it?
No, it's small rural, rural tri- I hate that word, rural tribal.
Is it a BIA or a DOJ grant? Because it's a federal one, right?
I had to look back through my notes to see which one it is. I would say DOJ. We've got several grants out there, so the grant rate.
BJA.
So you do have replaceable batteries?
BJA, so Bureau of Justice.
You do have replaceable batteries on these, so you can keep some charge?
Correct. So the issue is that our cameras now are outdated. They're 10-plus years old. They're dying. You, the call log every day, when I get up, I read the call log, and it says, "Show my camera 10-7", which means it's out of service. It's an issue that GRDA, I know, has ran into with their cameras. They had to upgrade, you know, the cameras. It's just technology to keep up with. And cameras are huge, and Chase could probably speak to that as far as an attorney side of it. It clears things up easily with the cameras. So having that technology that uploads straight to our servers and it syncs, these new cameras will sync with the car cameras. And so it'll eliminate a lot of our issues that we're having with cameras.
I will say, ours, we're in the exact same camera system that you guys have currently. And then also, we also switched to what you guys are switching to, and it's light-years difference. Ours were probably seven years old. I'm guessing yours are probably seven, eight, or nine years old. And the batteries inside of them can't be replaced without shipping them back to the factory. And the new ones have swappable batteries. So if it's a battery, end-of-life issue on the battery, you can at least swap them out and not kill the whole camera on it. It would be a no-brainer for me on this one. I know ours was considerably more than that, and we didn't get reimbursed for it. I think ours was in several hundred thousand to replace our body cameras, so.
They deal with 43 batteries, and then we get 40.
We get double the battery, get two batteries per each camera. And that will give us enough cameras for some reserves, you know, that one goes down or something. We've got a camera they can use to fill in for that, so.
And the picture quality is better than it was.
Oh, yeah.
Was this a specific line item in your budget request?
No, we, I mean, all of these grants, you know, we'll apply for them, but I'm not sure if we're going to get them or not. So, you know, once we rewarded it, we figured out where to take it from.
So you weren't going to get these cameras unless you had gotten this grant?
Correct.
Are there any things coming up rest of fiscal year that's major expense that we don't know about yet?
I mean, unless a grant came through, but, I mean, not that I know of. And like I said, this is how the capital outlay counts, not the general fund. So that's why, like I said, and I don't, to me, as an administrator, you can't put a price tag on the liability side of it with the camera system set we have and updating that to, it's very transparent, let's just say that. So everybody's on the same page with it.
Are you, are you guys storing these through the cloud?
Not right now. They're on a server at FIT. They've got the server and everything. We were looking at cloud, but it was going to be more expensive to do that. And we already had the server purchased, an updated server. So we just decided to stick with the server that we had. And it's got plenty of storage that we'll need. And so maybe in the future, but the cost was, you know, substantially more to go with the cloud.
Just curious.
Any further? If none, call for vote.
Yes.
Brashiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. All right, item four, mayor's report. Discussion and possible action to approve the city of Prior Creek pay plan for the fiscal '24, '25 year.
Motion.
And a motion from Shropshire?
Second.
Second from Bradshaw. So as we go through the pay plan that the city has, most of you know, if you don't, the FSLA standards have set regulations to the minimum pay for salary exempt. So it's a federal, federal thing we have to be in compliance with. We don't have very many employees that that will affect. I think it was four or five, maybe four.
Four.
But we have no other choice but to modify their, those few employees to that pay. And I think when we looked at it, it was a couple hundred bucks up is what they have to do. So we kind of fall lucky there. When we did the budget, those pay increases were budgeted in to the amount that we budgeted for the year. So we're just updating the, the pay, the pay plan document to modif- to show that. And it's basically, we added an asterisk and said, "The salary exempt employees will go to this amount." And so, and then there were some other things that we just kind of cleaned up where we had some redundancies and like clerk this, clerk that, clerk this, clerk that. And we just took them out and said clerk. So kind of cleaned up some of the verbiage on that. But that's, those are the only changes that we made to that.
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
Now, one is, so are we going to have to, is any of this going to be retroactive back to the beginning of fiscal year or?
No, it takes effect January 1. So.
Okay.
There was a, there was one change that took place in July, I think. And then that was like your step one, and then this is the final that we've been, I mean, I don't know of any more coming. We've not been notified of any more. But this was the, the second increase that we were notified we'd have to adjust to.
And when were you notified about this? And why didn't we do this back at the beginning of the fiscal year when we approved the budget?
I'm not really sure I understand that question. We budgeted for these increases.
No, I'm saying, why are we just now, several months later in the fiscal year approving this?
That increase hasn't taken effect yet. That increase takes effect in January. So the few employees that we have that, that fall under that come January, and we budgeted for this, their pay will have to go up to that step. And like I said, it's a couple hundred dollars a person. So if, if that for some of them. And that's an annual increase. That's not, so there's, it was budgeted. It was planned. Law's been out there for a while. We just had to wait for January 1 to get here. So.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions on that? Call for vote.
Brashiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Sorry, was that yes?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Okay. Item B, discussion regarding council's observation of the city's discretionary spending practices.
Motion.
And a motion from?
Second.
Second from Gantier?
I only have one question. And it's, well, I probably have some questions, more than one question about it. But I don't understand why we put things on here as discussion only and do not give ourselves the option for action.
I would think, based on what we can discuss tonight, we can figure out what, the idea is to figure out what we're going to deem as discretionary and what definition we want to use as that.
That's, I understand that. And I realize we got financial statements when we walked in tonight, and the budget picture's looking better. But if that weren't the case, and we needed to take action, doing that as soon as practical would be advisable on my behalf. I would rather us be able to at least have the option to do it tonight and not have to wait another three weeks, two weeks, so.
Three weeks, I believe.
Yeah, three weeks.
And I agree. I'd like to be able to have action on something that could potentially adversely affect us if we don't take action.
Which has now derailed us from the whole point of this agenda item, I guess, which would be discussion of our observation of discretionary spending practices. What is your observation of it, I guess? You probably see more than the rest of us.
I think, I think what I would like to do is, you know, I think if we just say, if we'd had straight action on it to say, "We're going to cut the discretionary," we'd have to define what that discretionary would mean. You know, it's kind of a vague word. What's necessary, what's not. But what, what Bruce may deem necessary, you may not. So what I want to see is, I want to see, I just want to see what you guys have to say on, on that. I think as we look at the departments and the spending that's been taking place, obviously we can tell that they're cutting things, but I wanted to see if there were things that you guys saw, maybe we could continue to cut, or things that we could address in a different manner. I know we had talked the other day about some other options, ways to create revenues and things like that. So more just an open discussion right now on, on what your guys' thoughts were. And if we need to come back with an action item in the next one, I am more than, more than game for that.
I think right now, in general, until we get all the, everything set up where we can look at it all, I know we just got some information recently. If it doesn't have to be spent, don't do it. If it does, do it until we figure out what's going on. And that would be, I mean, a department head should know, can, can I wait a little bit on this to see? I don't want to, I don't want to stop anything that's necessary. I don't want to put people in a bind. You know, that, that's not the intention. But at the same time, if we can wait until we know better what's going on and get a better grasp of it, I think it would be wise to, as a general, and then everybody could hopefully apply that in a way that would be more specific to their department.
So when we came in here for our all-night budget session, we sit down here and we cut the budget as much as we feasibly could, we put 360, 380,000 or so in unallocated reserves with the goal, when we came in here that night, of needing to get close to 800,000 or 900,000. Meaning, out of our $8 million budget, 5% to 7% of that we shouldn't spend this year because we're going to have to save that much money. We're going to have to save a half million dollars or generate that much revenue to cover.
Correct.
Without dipping into anything. And so in my mind, when we're talking about discretionary spending, it needs to be, obviously our financial statements were over for the first three months. So we're working in the negative direction there. We're going to have to do something to get the budget back on the other side of, of the line. Discretionary spending is one of the few things that, I'm going to say we, but really department heads can control, either through us or through you. So I think that that's the, you know, this, I spoke with Councilor Trammell about this, and, you know, I think he and I were in agreement at that point of, we don't want to have to approve everything that everything's spending, but maybe you should. And maybe you should be the gatekeeper of saying, "Can this wait, or can this not wait?" Or maybe this doesn't need to happen at all right now. And I think that was the, as I understood it when he spoke to me about it, that was kind of the intent behind this.
Right. I, well, first of all, discretionary spending, I'll define it. I mean, from accounting perspective, it's that spending that we are not in any way, for lack of better words, legally or I would say ethically required to spend. Here, we need to take out insurance. We need to, you know, we need to pay our salaries. We've got to, you know, we've got to pay the, the benefits associated with salaries. So it's, the discretionary spending is all of that additional stuff that doesn't fit in the bucket of non-discretionary. So, and that's kind of from an accounting perspective at the local or state level. I, I see our purchase order numbers going down, or the number of purchase orders going down. What I have not done is look to see if the actual amounts on those purchase orders are going down in tandem with the actual purchase order numbers. So, you know, the Octobers did come out, we're 85,000 ahead for October, which is good news. But I, you know, I think we need to continue the momentum of really being fiscally careful on, on the next couple of months. So not to jump to item C, but similar to item C, I, I think that I would like to see you start approving the discretionary spending. And, you know, and we can talk thresholds if we need to at the next meeting, but there needs to be a threshold where it kicks up to you before that, that spending is allowed. Similar to what you're now pretty much approving all over time, is my understanding. So I'd like to see something there, considering that the department heads still need to have flexibility to manage their individual departments. There needs to be a fine line there, a, a balance there. That's where I was going. And that's the conversation that Tyler and I have had. And I think you and I have kind of had that conversation as well, to be, to be fully transparent, so.
To meet our budget, we're going to have to exceed our revenues, or we're going to have to come in under budget.
Right.
But that's the only way we're going to balance is, so something has to. And we've talked multiple times, I know Bruce has said it multiple times, of it's not fair to tell a department head, "You've got this much money to spend, but don't spend it all." And so it, I mean, that's a tough conversation to tell them, like, "Here's your budget," but not really. It needs to be 5% or 10% less than that. And so as a department head, I would, I would say, "I'm going to try to spend all of it that you're going to let me spend." And then somebody's going to have to be the person telling me no and pulling the reins back. So I, like I said, I agreed with Charles' sentiment on this, and that was.
I would like to see B and C combined, just like the other two said. That would, you watch for us. Our big discussion, you and I discussed it too. I don't mind arguing with you, but I kind of like know where we're at. And right now, don't know where our fight is.
Bruce, why don't you tell them? We, we sat for two hours the other day.
Yes, we did. Didn't even get mad.
Bruce stood up and he goes, "We've been here for two hours. We ain't had a fight yet."
Were there witnesses?
I was there, and I didn't even get mad, so.
But that's our, that's our problem. And I think, I agree with him. I think we ought to be combined. You ought to be watching something, you think, and, and holding down until at least we see where we're at.
Sure.
It sounds better that we're 85,000 to the good, but we're a long way from being out of the hole yet.
And that's, and this is nothing against the department heads. This, and I know we've got Jeremy there, Kerry at the back. Well, this is nothing against y'all. This is, the mayor has visibility over all the departments on what's going on with the spending, whereas y'all pretty much are just, y'all are managing your own individual allocated budgets. So this is, you know, it gives you the- So this is, you know, it gives you the, 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 the ability to, to look across all the departments and kind of monitor and gauge on behalf of the council.
So is this something that you guys think?
On a real more time basis, yeah.
Going forward, that you'd like to see maybe by resolution?
Yeah.
Is that, this is part of the discussion that I wanna have, is?
Yes, I think so.
And I don't think any of it, I mean, I know Charles and I both agreed on the phone when we spoke about it of, we can't stop it, we can't come to a standstill, they're going to have to purchase things. And I know that it's going to create a barrier for them to purchase things, which has two effects. One, it's gonna be a pain for them, but also it may keep them from calling you, which may mean, it may stop some of the spending anyway. Um, but I, I don't think any of us want it to be cumbersome, but at the same time, it's the taxpayers' money that we've gotta be paying attention to, and none of us want to go over budget.
And right now, they can, they have discretionary up to a thousand dollars, so we would have to, I mean.
And I was gonna talk, so on, on part of that, the, up to five hundred, you know, we don't have to have approval through anybody. Once we hit the five hundred threshold, it's gotta go accounts payable, to check the accounts, to, to put eyes on. So I don't know what that threshold you're looking for is. Um, I, I know for our department, I'm sure it's, you know, citywide, um, like you were talking about, the, the PO's going down, I mean, we're watching it, and, and not spending, but don't have to. So, um, we do have that five hundred threshold, once we hit that, it goes to accounts payable. Um, Darla looks at it, says, you got, you, you're good to go on that account, 'cause we'll have to put account number, what it's for, and how much it's for, um, for her approval on, on five hundred and over, so, and then obviously the thousand and up.
But to your point, you have a budget, and in your, in your mind, this is how much money I can spend?
Hmm, no, not my mind, I mean, not, not really. I mean, I see, I like to see the financial statements, like.
Okay, well, that's fair enough, but you, but you, you have a number on paper.
And it is hard, I mean, in some of those budget areas, and that's where you gotta get, you know, creative to move things around to get thing, I mean, you gotta move forward in departments, so I get it, I mean, yeah, it, it's hard at times.
But to meet our budget, we really need to come in under budget, or exceed revenues. We're gonna have to do something.
Correct, to, to see the exact picture of things.
Yeah, and so somewhere.
I think the mayor just kinda be your conscience, is all it'd be.
No, I, I've got no issue, I mean, anytime, we, we talk to him anyway, so, I mean, it's not, that's not an issue, you know, as far as department heads go. I just, I do think that the threshold of where, you know, is it a hundred dollars, or four hundred dollars, or, or wherever, so, just something like that.
Carrie, you want something?
I think the word discretionary is not a great word, um, 'cause you still haven't really defined what's discretionary. Um, if the only things that aren't discretionary are payroll and insurance, then we can shut the library down and just go home. Um, 'cause then, by your definition, everything that we purchase at the library is discretionary. Um, and that's doing a disservice to our citizens, it's not keeping up with our promises, so that's not discretionary, in my opinion. We serve the public.
But is there a law that requires you to spend that?
No, but we've had a public library funded by the city since nineteen thirty-nine, so.
No, I get that, I understand that.
That's a long time of.
I get that.
Serving our citizens, increasing literacy, giving people things to do, and, you know, making the quality of life in Pryor and Mays County better. So.
I understand.
We serve the public. We have public bathrooms. Is soap discretionary? Are paper towels discretionary? Are cleaning supplies discretionary?
Depends on what gas station you go to.
I mean.
I, to, to some degree, they probably are, and to some degree, they probably aren't. But I, I, again, I don't think that any, I know that it's not my intent to stop the discretionary spending. It's to say, for him to overlook it and say, yeah, this is reasonable, we're going to go forward with this.
I think probably my, um, problem is that this is insulting, honestly. I mean, you've cut our budgets. My, the library's budget was cut, I think thirteen percent overall, once we got through the severance package. So you've cut our budgets, and now you're going to look at every single thing that we buy as if we are not already conscious of the fact that the city is behind, and that the city doesn't have money. It's insulting to the department heads. It just, I mean, it really is. I'm a professional, I've been in libraries for twenty years, I've been at this library for nine years. The library has never gone over budget, even when our budgets have been cut. So, I think, I would like it very much if all of you, after the holiday, would come and spend an hour or two on a Wednesday, or a day that we have programming, so that you can see what we do at the library. Go to the rec center, just sit and watch, see what they do at the rec center. Go to the parks department, see what they do, 'cause I don't think you guys understand what we do for this city and how hard we work to make this budget work.
But we're trying to do it, even though we generated eighty-five thousand, I think it was in October, we're still seven hundred thousand dollars down. What, that is what we are really focusing in on, every day.
The way you're doing it is insulting, Charles.
But why is that insulting?
Because you're insinuating that the department heads are spending willy-nilly, and not, we haven't cut, and we aren't watching things. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what this discussion is about, right?
No. This discussion is about where else can we continue to cut to avoid the more painful cuts down the road at the end of the year. That's what we're looking at, that, what we're looking at. Again, this is not about the library, this is not about the police department or the fire department. This is about this general fund in total, and we're trying to put more responsibility on the mayor to monitor the discretion, the, the, I'm gonna call it discretionary spending. The biggest problem I have setting up here with this type of purchases is, this council does not know the purchases until we set up here and sign the purchase orders. And at that point, it's too late, the money has been spent. I want to get to the point where someone up here, the mayor, is looking at these on a real-time basis and saying, you know, maybe we don't need that right now. I'm not saying library books, I'm not saying something that you must function on, or you must maintain health and hygiene of in your library. But there are other things, and I'm not gonna point them out tonight, that I have set up here and signed off on. And I was like, are you kidding me? We're still doing this?
Then those are the conversations we need to have. If there is a, if there is an issue with a particular purchase, a particular department, or whatever, we need to have particular conversations. We don't need to have a blanket policy that's going to, you know, hinder everything that the city does, because we have one issue.
That was just hindering.
It's not gonna hinder it too much, but it is, I mean, I, if I have to call Zach every time we need to order paper towels for the bathrooms, then that's, 'cause I don't order those, Cindy orders those, so Cindy has to tell me, we're out of paper towels. I have to say, Zach, we're out of paper towels, can we buy paper towels? Yes. Tell Cindy, we're out of paper towels, go for it, Zach said fine, and then she can buy it. It slows it down, which I understand is your point.
Has anybody said, Carrie, you're spending too much money?
No, but I don't think anybody has said that to anybody.
We're looking at the whole group, not just Carrie. No, I think.
Have you said that to anybody?
Cut as much or more than anybody in your department. It may not be your department. The mayor's gonna look at all these departments. If you don't have a problem, you won't hear from him. If another department may be spending too much, he's gonna catch you. That's what we're trying to do. All this fight we've been doing is trying to cut enough back not to fire somebody, lay 'em off, if proper word. That's what we're trying to do, and that's where we're trying to figure out our money. We don't know exactly how much money we spend or not spend or have. And that's a problem for everybody, and like I told you, and like I told everybody else. It's not fair for you department heads to say, here's your money, you can spend, but don't spend it. And that's what we've done.
Well, I think that, um, I don't know, I can't speak for the other department heads, but it would be great to have an idea of what you consider discretionary.
I'll, I'll throw myself on the sword for something that was public. Whenever I asked Ms. Davis about buying coffee for her employees, it's not necessarily that I thought she had a problem with buying coffee. I think that that's a discretionary s- expense that we could manage. So, it, we voted it down, but we still couldn't vote it down. I mean, the, the, Mr. McBride told us, it doesn't matter, it's already been spent, you have to pay it. So, i- if there are other things out there like that, it's Courtney's discretion if she wants to spend money for that. One hundred percent, to, to this day, it's still, it's no different than it would be yours, or Jeremy's, or any other department head out there. It might be her opinion that it's a good expense, it might be Zach's opinion that it's not. Right now, that's, the only stop is, stops with her, or whether or not she thinks it's a good expense, it would be the same thing with you. I think that there are things out there that are like that, where we could look at it, and Zach could say, hey, maybe this isn't the best way to spend these funds. I don't think that it's everything, that, I, I'm positive that we can surely make an exception for cleaning supplies and necessity items, like, I don't, you, you may be right, discretionary may not be the best word. But I do think that there could be some sort of overwatch that safeguards before we just have to come in here and sign a purchase order, whether we agree with it or don't agree with it, or whatever anybody else is up to at the Department Heads, if that makes any sense.
It does.
I don't, I don't.
But it sounds to me like.
I don't mean it insulting, so I'm sorry.
Specific people and specific purchases, not the entire city as a whole, and so.
It's just difficult without a policy in place.
Okay, that's, that's my two cents.
But is it really? I mean, because can't we just go to whoever it is, the departments or the people that we think are not being, why, I, I hear exactly what she's saying, you know, um, that, it brings me back to, and I, and I just, sorry, I always go back to teaching things, but it's like, when one or two people do something, and the whole class gets, has to get this big window when, um, when they're doing everything, that they're, they're, they're within the restraints of what they're trying to do, and so, I don't know. It's, is it better to be more direct with who we think maybe is overspending, or is not using funds in a way that we think is? I, I don't know, I ju, I, I hear exactly what she's saying, that, and why that is insulting to the department heads that are doing a good job of watching their spending and stuff too. So is that something we look at, and then we see these purchase orders, okay, that looks a little, we need to go talk to them, because this really shouldn't be happening, and so then we go directly to those people. And then, and Buddy, I'd like to hear from you at some point too, what you think.
I think, I think.
You're here too, you're a department head too.
I, I sympathize with the feeling of being micromanaged and being treated like you're twelve. Anybody who's been in the military probably knows that and has that experience. But at the same time, and it's not an insult to any public head, and I'm looking at the numbers of the library through October, and they're really good. I commend you on that, they, they are good, from what I can tell. But you are a department head for a public entity, everything you say and do is open for public record and for public scrutiny. And so any member of the council, or any member of the public, should be able to, well, with, with, that's appropriate, should be able to come to you and say, hey, X, Y, and Z, so this is not intended to bring the hammer down on one individual department or anything, this is just the next step in our desire to stop believing.
Or purchasing, the way we do it, like you get the invoices ahead of time, or, or something, I don't know. Because I get what you're saying, you don't know what we spent, you don't know what the police department's, may, I, you know, you brought a dishwasher up one time, what am I buying a dishwasher for? And I explained it to you. I don't know what Carrie spends or something, and you, you guys aren't gonna understand that. Um, but there's probably a valid reason behind the scenes, and maybe that's. Any issue explaining it.
I'll say this, and this might clear something up, and I'm gonna use you as an example, 'cause you're up here. If there's not a policy. I've pastored churches, and we had a situation, and, and, and this is relevant, if you'll hear what I'm saying. We were talking about how do we do benevolence, how we help people. And I wanted to come up with a plan in writing, you gotta meet these qualifications and we'll help you, and then so many deacons signed off on all that. Everything was fine and great, everybody loved it. So the head deacon didn't wanna help a particular person who met that category, because they had, and this is not local, this is something in other state. We don't wanna sit here, I don't like Jeremy, but I like Carrie, so I'm not gonna let him, but I'm gonna let her. That's not what it's about. This is what we can afford, this is how we need to operate, let's be fair across the board. And it's not picking, I have not heard anybody on council, nor have I said anything, I, I, about the way you're doing your business. That's not, so don't feel insulted, but we're the ones that's accountable for the financial status of the city, and we're trying to figure out a way to make sure we don't go under, plain and simple. That's all it is. It's not against any individual department head. We just gotta get a handle on things to make sure that we protect the, the citizens' money and that the citis, that the city stays solvent, and that's what we're looking at, no more, no less.
I think at this point, all we're asking is the mayor watch the other department.
And I've got no issue.
We don't, they're not gonna pull you out.
Doesn't matter to me, honestly.
Stick or beat you, he just needs to watch and see, and if, if he's got a question, he'll call you. If he's got a question, he'll call Carrie.
Yeah, I mean, and I've got no issue with explaining.
The city council's not in a position, this council is not in a position to maintain a recurring oversight.
You're not, I know.
Because we don't meet that often, and do you really want eight of us calling you every time we have a question? So we're looking for a central point where this council, council should go to with questions. And we're kinda putting the onus on you for, if we're gonna, you know, start throwing someone under the bus, or putting someone's neck on the line for spending we don't like, we're gonna go to the mayor. This is kind of where.
Well, and let me just say that, I don't have a problem with that. Like, I'm not, I'm not opposing. I, the, the real reason for the discussion, and I get your, your disdain for no action, but I think this is the healthy part of this discussion, I mean, I have, is, we can, we can define Webster's. What, what. Their point is gonna be. Right? But there's always gonna be. Up here. There, that's as well. So. To the council. Consider, do we want to temporarily, or, not necessarily take away their. Pay any purchases over five hundred dollars, you have to have mayor's approval before you encumber that. Now.
I think that was the intent of this item.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, but before we just define what that, that is, that, that discretionary, is it gonna be this? Is it gonna be this item? We don't need to. Word, we need. For one department. Say almost. Fall within the. That would need to be all of them.
That would be a. For. I think the focus was general, I did.
So, you know, that's kinda where, where I wanna direct your thoughts to right now. Um, you know, we can, I can send out an email in the morning, we can start anything, we don't really need to vote on that. But the idea is, I wanna get your guys' and gal's input on, uh, on, on the direction you really think that needs to go.
I think that's different than talking about watching every single purchase that comes through, just having a limit. I mean, that, that's, that's different than.
I mean, if I've gotta be able to do that every single purchase, it's gonna be quite tedious for them as well.
No, I think there's a threshold we're looking for.
Right.
I, I think it's good, but, I mean, are you, are you, I mean, I just kinda feel like you're at some level already watching spending, and you're already looking at that.
This would just put a buffer in there, that, 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 as you said, might slow it down, might, might be in there. I have no problem sending out an email in the morning that says, if you're gonna spend more than five hundred dollars, then you need to, you need to let me know before you do it. You know, those are the things that we can do, and if it doesn't fix itself, or it doesn't, if it's not enforced, then we can enforce it in other ways.
And, and Mr. Mayor, and, and, and this is just a thought that I wouldn't be opposed to. So she spends two, three hundred dollars on janitorial supplies a month, or whatever she spends, I just grabbed the number. And it's a regular monthly thing, and you know that. That doesn't mean you have to say, we need three bars of soap, and we, we need a paper towel for this dispenser, and, and a roll-in toilet. That's not the intent at all. It's okay, we're just trying to make sure we're staying on track, across the board. And like I said, I want it to be fair and easily understandable, because we've had too much problem, and since I've been here, with not knowing what, or how, or how we do the purchase, how we set out for bids. Let's get it to where everybody understands, we're all on the same page, no hurt feelings, we're all working together as a team. 'Cause that's what it is. At the end of the day, we're a team. If we're not a team, we're in trouble. So we're either gonna work together, or we're gonna have problems, and we're trying to figure out a way. And this may not work as well as we think, we may try something else. But we are trying to get a handle on this in a, in a productive way, and it, I, it's not meant to be insulting or demeaning to anybody. So please, I hope no department head takes it that way, 'cause I don't believe that's the intention of anybody to try and do that. We're just trying to protect the city.
Thank you.
Just real quick before we go, Buddy, did you want to address anything? I mean, you don't have to, I was just gonna.
No, that's all right.
I know, you're here, you're another department head here.
I'm just trying to hide back behind the veil.
Sorry, I didn't know you were trying to hide, my bad.
No, I mean, I understand, I mean, even with the, with the mayor, I mean, anything that we usually get, you know, sometimes what happens, like with the sweeper here, you know, we got it up, we got it going. Well, then the, the air part, I can't remember the name of it now, but on the, on the brakes of it, the, the cylinders on the inside went bad, they've, they've been there for twenty years. You know, they finally went out, so, you know, and the times like that, and I hate to say, you know, the need to email Zach, here we go, you know, I'm gonna have to tell him, you know, we, we gotta have his, get a, try to get a quote for it, but then sometimes we don't know what the quote's gonna be until actually they get in there and tear it apart. Try to find parts for it and stuff like that, but I try to let him know on everything, you know, that we do. And again, he, he, he doesn't micromanage, but I mean, there is sometimes he's called me, so we, do we really need it? Well, no, I mean, I don't, instead of buying Nike shoes, it may be a Mikey, you know, just something down, downgrade just a little bit, but the thing is that I understand, we got, we've got to watch what we're spending to be able to, to be able to keep things functioning, and I, 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 I really don't think that just by listening, that you're trying to keep us from purchasing things that we really need. Like at the street department, there are sometimes things just happen, you know, with the equipment that we have, you know. One day, like I said, we may get a, a flat tire on, on the loader, we have to take it, there's nobody around here, we can't fix it ourselves, it's too big. So we have to take it out, you know, but again, that's something I, I try to let the mayor know, say, hey, you know, we're gonna take this off, take it over, toss and drop it off, get it fixed and, and things like that, but yeah, but for's micromanaging on, on everything that, that we try to purchase, yeah, I think that would be a mistake because I think that's, that's gonna get everybody aggravated, that everybody, then, then it's not gonna be as a team. But I think, you know, if we want to do, if it's anything over five hundred, you know, let the mayor know, say, hey, this, this is what, this is what's gonna happen, I don't, I don't personally have a problem with it. That's why a lot of times I get with the beginning of the year, I get, you know, blanket purchase orders, so I don't have to, the money's already been approved for everything with that, so like with fuel, you know, that's something that we, you know, every two weeks, we have to get fuel. You know, that's just something that we don't normally have to, you know, bother the mayor with, that's just something, that's just running the department like it should be, so we don't run out, but I know also the problem is, is the prices of everything's going up. You know, I've already had two notifications after January first, concrete's going up eight dollars yard. Starting January first, the, the crusher run that we get out there, at the crusher out there, it, it's going up fifteen percent. So I mean, that, that's another problem we run into is, you know, everything keeps going up and going up and you know, there may be some other way that we need to start generating funds somewhere else, I don't know, I mean, but, you know, I think if we all work together, but yeah, I think, you know, micromanage is a bad thing, but you know, for's letting the mayor know if something, what's going on, need to be done, I mean, I, I can see that, so. Been department head, I think, I don't know, probably what, ten, twelve years of been department head, I guess it is, or something like that, but just because I know the money that we have in our, our budget, I mean, that's what it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be spent for. You know, like I said, at the end of the year, you know, it's, it's, that's what it's supposed to be spent for, but, you know, I do try to save back some, so the money, so it gets put back, budget ninety percent next year. I mean, my goal is to be able to have enough money put back in reserve that one day if something happened, that, you know, that we have that money to fall back on. Whether things keep going up, I doubt if that's probably possible, it's ever gonna happen, but but again, if we, if, if we ain't got the money in the, in our checkbook, we don't need to be writing a check for something, so, I mean, that's. Thank you. Mayor, like one more comment I'd like to make. This council, members of this council need to, to be, get involved with our departments, they need to go down to the street department, need to go down to the golf course, need to go to the police station. I would say there's members of this committee or this board right now has never been to one of these departments, they come up here twice a week, try and make a decision of what they think and what they heard, and don't go down and talk to them and see what's going on. I think we owe it to them to go get involved and see what they're doing.
I think that's very wise. Thank you.
Madam Clerk. Do you have an opinion on this matter?
No comment, I'm ready to move on to this.
Okay.
All right, there's no further, we'll move on to item C. Discussion and possible action regarding requiring all departments to request and receive approval from the mayor before incurring any overtime.
So move.
I got a motion from Gombe, second from Bashir, discussion?
I understand the intent, I do think it's probably equally as cumbersome to get approval sometimes and I just know if I was in your shoes, I'm the on-call administrator for JRD A frequently, and I get woke up in the middle of the night, and it's not fun. I'm not sure that you want to get woke up every time that the police department's gonna have overtime.
Well, I think.
Or comp time, or whatever it is, and same thing for the fire department.
I think this was, and I've talked to most of the department heads, well, most of them is, is probably some of them, about this. You know, you gotta know when you're gonna be, you know, when you're gonna have overtime. Now, there are those situations where law enforcement or in fire, things just happen. And we just have to deal with that, those are the moments where, as a public servant, I'm willing to take those calls at two in the morning. That, that's one hundred percent on me, and I'm okay with that, if that's a direction that we want to go, so be it, I don't have a problem with that. At the very least, they can ship me a text and I can get them back in the morning. But I do think that for the time being, it would be wise that we just know what's coming before we get there. You know, some of the departments that don't operate in a manner that, you know, we got Buddy, we were talking this morning, I believe, about possible snow coming in. You know, and this was, correct me if I'm wrong, this conversation we had this morning. Well, let me know what, what you're gonna have to do with your guys, we know, you know, we have an idea. Jeremy, I know you've, you and I have talked about it quite a bit. Go ahead.
No, I mean, just on ours, I mean, you gotta look, and I know we had this conversation during the budget, you know, about our overtime. And there was an issue with throw of our shifts, we can get that in our time, but it ate up a percentage of that right off the bat, before September hit us, and we'd eaten up a lot of that. Which, you know, neither here nor there, it's done, we gotta be able on it and get through it. Plus going down officers, my overtime is hit by animal control, which they're very good, you know, Becky and them keep a tight rope on it, but you know, animal control hits it, dispatch hits it, we had dispatch out for a while, we were down to four dispatchers, we were pulling officers to cover dispatch. You know, SROs, we've got one on workman's comp, we got one out on medical, so now I'm pulling people to cover the schools, I mean, there's just a lot of different moving parts that you've got to cover, and being down, we were down six bodies, we got one back last week. So being down those people, you know, overtime is an issue, you know, and I understand that, that's one thing we had to talk about, you know, going into, you know, the, the budget, and it was brought up that we'll just watch it, try to see where it's at. And when we get there, and hopefully some of it offsets, I don't know how the OSO money walk, works into it with the, the grants, the school overtime, I don't know if it's figured in our whole total or not, or. Okay, so.
I'm sorry, you're good.
You're, no, there's just a lot of moving parts that you have to cover, you know, the schools, the dispatch, you know, animal control, all that hits that same pot of overtime, so there's a lot of, lot of things that could go on. Plus, September was huge on events, you know, you got Rock Palma, Florida Rays, Bluegrass, we got the money back. I don't know if it's hit the overtime yet, the reimbursement from EDTA that gave us money back. I don't know if it's been, you know, back yet or not, but I know that was approved just the, you know, a month or so ago, where they reimbursed us some of our, thank you, Adam, some of our money, our, our overtime, so. There's things that we can do to offset that, like I said, just, just watch it. It is hard though, we work on a twenty-eight day cycle. So we may be watching it, we may be good the first three weeks, and then bam, you get hit with things at the end of that pay period. And there's really nothing you can do, and I know Tyler deals with it to at JRD A, I mean, you may be good, and then something comes up and hits you at the end of that pay period.
Jeremy, on your SRO overtime. In the new contract we had with school, I think they were gonna give us twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand for overtime, and that wasn't per SRO, that was total.
Correct.
So has that money already been used up?
No, I don't know exactly where it's at, but I know the way we figured that was, I took all the events from last year that we worked, times the officers, and we came up with twenty-two thousand something, so she gave us twenty-five to make sure we had enough to cover it. That was doing last year's stuff, so I don't know where we're at in the SROs at this point, but no, I mean, we just got through football season, so it's going to start getting hit with basketball, there's a lot of basketball games coming up, and then she's also good, she knows we're down SROs, so if we've got an officer filling in, like we'll throw out a, a shift, they work an SRO shift, so they're getting paid. You know, the detectives, that they're filling in for SROs, they're getting overtime through the school, so we're trying to offset our general overtime budget.
So can you please research it and let me know if that twenty-five thousand's already been expended or how much is.
It has not been expended, I guarantee it.
Has not been expended.
Yeah, it's not, there's no way it's even close, but she can tell you the numbers if, but no, I mean, we, I sat down myself, went through those numbers and added them up, that was five officers, they were football game, we didn't have as many officers at football games this year, so even through the football, it was lower than it was, and that was all the basketball, wrestling tournaments, everything that school had last year. It was twenty-two thousand, and I, like I said, I put those numbers together myself with her.
How does a shift work and scheduling and all that work when school's out, like say for, you know, the, the winter break or for spring break or for weeks where.
That's a lot of times they'll use a vacation, or they'll do trainings, like summertime, they'll get training caught up, but the winter breaks, they're usually vacations, holidays, they're burning those.
So do they ever get worked back in to like the regular shift work or?
During the summer, they will some.
For summer, okay.
And just so you remind everybody, when we set this SRO account up this year, this is the first year that we did it, we also went into the time clocks and gave a time code where they can clock, do what?
Pay code.
Pay code? There's a pay code that they can go in and they can punch in as an SRO for that time. And until we really complete a full season, we won't have a real good grasp on what that's gonna look like for, for a budget season, so.
Correct, I mean, we, we did the best we could as far as, she fluked it a little for us from what we had last year. And, and I've got no issue talking to the mayor and say, hey, we're working on our twenty-eight days, I don't think he wants a call every time somebody is out, you know, they get off at ten o'clock, and they get held over fifteen minutes or thirty minutes or an hour on a call. You know, because we try to flex it off if we can. You know, and Couch, you know, he watches it throughout the, the pay period too, you know, to make sure at the end of that twenty-eight days, we're trying to get everybody as low as we can, you know, and still manage the coverage of the shifts.
I think the main thing is just making sure that I'm aware before there's huge encumbrances of time. That's, that's really gonna be the request.
And with summer over, I mean, that kind of helps you a lot, so.
So Mayor, you're in favor of this, you brought it up at a department head meeting, et cetera. So have you denied anybody any overtime yet?
So far, I've not had to, no. Now, we talk every month in our department, and they'll all confirm in our department head meeting, to watch it, minimize it, keep it down. If there's not a need to, don't do it. But you know, the other side of that is, we realize that half hour here, twenty minutes here is gonna happen, we don't want people just dropping a job and walking away. And we're not gonna put anybody in a situation where they feel like they have to rush to get a job done where maybe safety or integrity of the job is jeopardized, that's not, that's not what we're here for, that's probably more problems. But like I was talking with Kerry the other day, you know, typical scenario, they're gonna know midweek when somebody's gonna be down the direction, just give me a heads up. Hey, so-and-so is probably gonna have a little bit of overtime this week, here's why. And I'm okay with that, I think that's absolutely appropriate, there's, there's open communication with all the department heads, and that's healthy, and, and I think I think it's just a good direction for us to go. What I don't like is, you know, being blindsided by, by a bunch of just overtime, so I think it's, I think it's a healthy move for us at this point, right now.
So does this need to be done in some sort of formal resolution, or is it just a simple vote of the council? And it, and is this gonna be kind of indefinite or through the end of the fiscal year, or just kind of out there until it's.
I think let's ride it out through the end of this fiscal year and see.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that. I think if the council votes in favor of this action, then it'll be implemented starting tomorrow morning, so.
Would the people that made the motion be willing to bend that to where it would be through the end of the fiscal year?
Mayor.
I think it's Chris.
It was Gombe and Bashir's?
Yeah.
Gombe.
You're talking just to do it through the end of the year?
The end of the fiscal year.
I, I'm curious on your, before you make your amendment, if they would amend it on our emergency services to notify, they don't have to notify you before, but they have to notify you as soon as practical that it's either has been incurred or will be incurred, if that's, makes sense, I mean, I don't. An email or a text, I don't think that you need to be woken up at two in the morning to be like, hey, I'm gonna be fifteen minutes late.
No, I don't.
I don't, I don't think that's reasonable. It, it's not gonna change the fact of whether it happens anyway, I mean, whether you get notified then or you get notified in the morning, so.
The idea is that I'm aware it's there.
Right.
Before it hits a report, before it hits those things, so if you'll amend your motions.
Okay, so the recommendation is let's verbalize it again to make sure the clerk.
My amendment, or my suggestion for amendment would be that if you're outside of business hours, I guess, irregardless of the department, because it'd be the same thing for Buddy's department. Outside of business hours, that you, you send the mayor some kind of notification.
Email, text.
Yeah, so that he's aware of it, it doesn't necessarily have to be pre-approved, it's just.
Like within twenty-four hours or something?
Soon as possible.
Soon as practical. Send something, yeah.
And that's for emergency, police, fire?
I would just say anything outside of business hours for anybody.
Well, I mean, the library's not open, so that's not gonna happen, and, and different.
I mean, we're open till eight on Thursdays. And six every other day.
True. True.
I think whatever they, whatever, whatever way they notify me is fine, I don't, I don't have a prejudice to that.
I don't know, you guys are trying to do this tonight, but you can already tell there's some confusion over it, I would recommend the resolution that's not required, but just based off of how the council handled the hire and freeze. I think anything like this that can have a gray interpretation, putting an actual resolution in writing would be beneficial in the long run.
And we can implement the process, and then if you and I can work on.
We can do that.
It doesn't have to be.
I mean, it's just a paragraph.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be much.
People know what it is.
You guys agree with that?
Yes, and Courtney, what do you have written down as the suggestion?
I'm waiting for you guys to make your decisions and tell me.
Okay, um, do you want to just implement the process now and then at the end of the fiscal year, then if we want to do a resolution and we can at that time?
How about we implement the process and I'll work with Chase to get a resolution, the next council will throw that resolution out there.
And then we can put the time limits on that.
Or whatever, I don't.
You want to nail it down that hard? So, so the one that we do need to put.
Just so many conversations.
All right, so was I the one that actually made the motion?
Yep.
Okay. We can amend it to, say during after hours or when the office is closed.
If it simplifies it, I'm really not concerned about hours or, or not, so I think let's just have them notify me as soon as practical.
So what we do on ours, because ours is gonna be the biggest one, obviously, and it's just twenty-four hours a day that I don't want notified about either, until the next, that they, what they do, they go in there and the, the time clock, they can put call number such and such, was over thirty minutes dealing with it. And that's noted, and Courtney gets those in the time clock correct. Couch deals with most, all that stuff, but that's how it is right now, like they'll go in and put while they're in, and ours, like I said, is different than others because we're on a twenty-eight day pay period. So they may be over this pay period, but they can flex it off throughout, so you know, ours is a little more fluid, I guess, as far as that end up goes, and it's the bigger one, I mean, obviously, I know that, so. However we need to do it, it's fine, but I don't get notified, nor do I want to if they're over on a call at, you know, ten o'clock at night or at six in the morning, or whatever they're doing if they're on a call, that's what we're gonna supervise it for.
As soon as practical is probably the best wording.
And that's where maybe we can work in time clock and you can see also some of that stuff, so.
All right.
So honey, did you hear your wife say, why in the world they keep calling?
She already does. When they say that.
Unless it says Buddy, and then she's like, don't answer it.
Okay, um, so what do, what do you recommend that we?
I would recommend that department heads let me know as soon as practical, when they're gonna encumber some overtime. Preferably before, but if it's not, then as soon as possible.
Department heads notify the mayor as soon as po- you got.
As soon as practical.
Is it necessary to define all of this if we're gonna be drafting a resolution, can they just say approve it and draft a resolution?
As soon as possible if you're implementing it now, because it starts tomorrow.
Have you already implemented?
So if it's being implemented now, do we need a resolution?
Nothing official.
No, but it's still right.
You want to just, are you guys okay, we're just putting a resolution together and then do it that way? We'll just come up with a resolution, if that's okay. I'll work with you on that, and I'll we'll continue, we'll just get the resolution going.
Are, are we wanting to suspend this vote or? Are, are we wanting to suspend this vote or?
Yep.
Could you just amend it to draft a resolution?
Yeah.
For this?
Let's draft a resolution.
I, I would like to change my motion that we draft a resolution to allow the mayor to be informed about overtime. Is that broad enough to get you what you need?
Yeah. Okay, I'll go with that.
Second is amended through Brishiers as well.
Does that make it easier?
Okay.
And you're tabling it correct to next meeting?
Tabled to the next meeting, which is just.
Yes, that, that, that would be perfectly acceptable.
Both, both agree to that. I mean, call for the vote when you're ready.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gonthea?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishiers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good discussion. I appreciate that, guys and lady. A discussion of possible action to accept a bid from Glover and Associates in the amount of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-three and eighty-eight cents for the twenty-twenty-four street rehabilitation project to be paid from Street Rehab Project's account one four one four five, five four one zero. Other bids received, APAC Central Incorporated in the amount of four hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five eighty, TriStar Construction LLC in the amount of four hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five seventy, and Ellsworth Construction in the amount of four hundred and forty thousand and ten cents.
Motion?
Second.
A motion from Joy and a second from Brown. I'm going to invite Dale up to talk. There may be some discussion about the bids and the, the past history with some of these that we've done business with in the past. So we kind of really need to have a little bit of a discussion on this. Dale?
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor, Council. I know we've had some past history with, with, with a company called H and G, okay? Uh, I think everybody's familiar with them. They bid a project last year and we did not award it to them. I don't know exactly what the relationship is between Glover and Associates and H and G are, okay? But I do know the person I deal with is the same. Now, he did not sign all, all of the paperwork, okay? So that's what I have on that, okay? We are doing work with them right now in, in Wagner, similar proj, project, and currently I don't have any issues with them.
So I think the discussion that we just need to make everybody aware of, even though that's the low bid, under the name of H and G, Buddy, you feel free to come in if you want to. I think I can speak for most of this. We have had work done with H and G in the past. This was discussed when the, um, in, in the, in the, in the last alleyway project that we did. In terms of quality work, quality equipment they brought in was, I think, we said they had a backhoe that would only go in reverse. Um, and it took long periods of time for them to get the work done. Weeks would elapse, things would happen. And so when we did the alley project, if you recall, Terry, we shot down their low bid that was a hundred thousand dollars less because we had that. So we had a meeting with them. They requested to come in. They had mentioned that they were not, that, uh, let me, let me rephrase that. That Glover and Associates was not associated with H and G. Dale reminded them quickly that the bottom of their email said H and G. So that said, um, the problems we had were several years back. And again, the individual that we worked with the last time was not a part of this process, correct, this time?
That's.
That we're aware of.
That we were.
The, the other side to that is, um, we also can have an inspector as part of that program to follow them tooth and nail to go through and make sure that they're doing the work as we've asked them to do. Personally, I, I know that that's a seventy-three thousand dollar difference between the two bids, but I, I question if we get low quality again, that's on us. If we go with the business we've had problems with in the past, that also said, coming back in to redo a project could be way more substantially expensive than seventy-three dollars or seventy-three thousand. So I just want to make sure that the council is okay and aware. Discusses whether or not that's the route we want to go and have them, have Dale put an inspector on them. That inspector possibly may have to go and measure the depth of the asphalt and, and stay on them, make sure they're doing things right. Overlay that they're milling. It'll be tedious for that inspector, but.
Did we put a timeline on the completion of the work?
We, it, there is one in the contract, yes.
Okay, so hopefully the issue of it dragging out for weeks or months passed wouldn't be an issue.
I'm hoping, yeah, and, and the, being that that's Highway twenty, Old Highway twenty, it's going to have to be timely.
And if an inspector's assigned, is that part of the project or is that additional cost?
That's, that's, that's part of our contract. It's, it's, it's already in.
So in theory, that's going to be there with whoever is awarded the bid.
That's correct.
Correct.
So.
Was this discussed in the street? Yeah, this would be my only other question about this.
Yes, we did discuss.
Yes, it was discussed and I think, if I recall right, it was a consensus that we kind of liked that low bid and that possibly there's going to be, could be, that would free up some money for some other things to be included into that project or added to others. Uh, of course, with some change orders, uh, like, for example, this is going to start on the east side of Cemetery Hill, basically, but might, we might be able to go to just to the west side where that big utility cut patch was in there if we go with the cheaper price. And also maybe some things for, or, and or on another project, since they're going to be there to maybe do some work at Gaither. Possibly, that's not part of this contract, but we, we, we did discuss that.
Right.
And we also talked about that this issues that they, they had previously was years ago on other projects and may not, may, may or not be the same actual people involved with the projects now that was working for them back then.
No, you're correct, and those were things we did discuss. I just want to make sure that before we make a vote and something happens, that we're all aware of past history. I think that's fair to make, make aware of past history, but.
Mayor, would, if we've got an inspector, we shouldn't have a problem, shouldn't we?
Hypothetically, Bruce, yeah, that's, that's kind of the, you know.
So, why we go low bid, maybe do his job we got him made. Okay. An, an inspector can a, a, identify issues, but can, can he tell which oil is being, being put in the asphalt at the asphalt plant? He cannot. Okay, so just because there's an inspector on the job, don't mean there are things that can be done that is out of his control. Now, what we can do is test the asphalt once it gets laid and that's, that's my intention.
And that same thing could happen with any contractor though. You don't know what the asphalt's.
Yes, I, I, I just want to make sure everybody knows just because there's a inspector on the side, doesn't mean the contractor's going to be doing everything perfect. Okay, because he don't.
Just hopefully we're going to catch it quickly.
Exactly.
So Terry, did the street committee have a recommendation here or whenever you brought it to the full council or?
I thought we was just going to leave it up for a discussion, but we did lean towards the low bid.
Being that we have that inspector.
So it wasn't by vote, but by consensus, pretty much, okay.
So.
If the work is done and something's found to be wrong with the contractor's work, what falls under warranty or that they would have to redo before we would incur any costs?
We, we, we will have a one-year maintenance bond, so if it's identified but, but within that one year, he is required to go back out and fix it. If he didn't come out and fix it, we do have the ability to hire other contractors, come out and fix it and charge that to the bonding companies. We never want to go there, okay?
Right.
So that's, it's a legal battle, but, but it is there.
All right, further discussion?
I'm just, Buddy, did you have any opinion on it, one way or the other?
No, well, I mean, again, you know.
You're going to have to be the one who fixes it later.
Yeah, well, like you were talking about with inspector, yes, sometimes, well, you got an inspector with a, with a job that, that distance going through there. Sometimes he may be hollering that good one in and back and forth the other. But the inspector, I mean, it, it, it has helped with our project. Because sometimes I, I used to be, try to be the inspector there and sometimes I'd get called off. Well, depending on how long it would be before I was able to get back. But with an inspector there, he's, he's there to be able to do things. And again, like Dale was talking about with like with the oil for the asphalt, you know, that's, I think that's what happened. My, just my opinion there on Gaither, that's what happened there was, uh, there wasn't any monitoring on that there. And that's, that road's only three years old and it's already, it's ready to be taken out and redone. And I think it's just, that's what we're running into. And I think, you know, we, if we want to go with that, that's fine. You know, done in a timely manner, my thing is I'm trying to get it where, once we're done with the budget and everything's approved, I'd like to go ahead and start going after bids because it seems like every year it keeps going over and we're having to try to roll that money over if anything happens. You know, I'd like to get it started as soon as possible. In case, like I said, there's something happens that comes in, you're going to have bad weather coming in, you know, and things like that. So you're going to have what they call rain days, you know, you've got to give that back to them. But yes, done in a timely manner, have the proper equipment there. I don't know if you all remember the last time that when they done that work, they was doing, uh, like over on Northeast First Street, where we had all the intersections or tried to block them off for about ten weeks because they come in, milled the roads and then they left. They, oh, there was days they were supposed to have been here and they, they didn't show up. Well, we'll be here that day. Well, then they didn't show up. So, well, then, so we ended up finally had to move the barricades. Well, then we had some extra damage on the streets because when you take the, the asphalt off it, now you're basically almost back down to just your base material. Well, if you start getting a bunch of road traffic on that, then you're going to start tearing your base up. So that's going to have to be repaired before then. So we put in our contract before that if you mill anything off, you have to have a hard service back on it within forty-eight hours. And I think that's, that's stopping a lot of the.
Is that in this contract?
We follow the old, old doc spec and they do have a requirement, I don't know if it's forty-eight hours or not right off, offhand, but there is a time limit that they have to be back now. One thing you don't know is, is, is weather. Okay, you can't lay asphalt when it's cold out. So if they mill it off, then cold weather blows, it, lo, luckily you catch that and say, don't mill that because you can't get it talked, okay? And that's where your inspector comes in, he talks to the foreman on site and say, what are you doing today? What are you going to do next week? What are you going to do the week after that? And we try to control that the best, the best that we can.
So if, if you had this money, would you go with low bid or would you say, hey, I'd rather take my chances with the other?
Seventy-three thousand is a lot of money, so I would probably go with the low bid and just keep a, a, a good eye on.
Keep in mind that on those past projects too, the actual engineer that designed them and worked on them was a completely different person that worked for Mr. Burke's company. And Mr. Burke, the owner of the company, is representing himself to do our engineering work. And he, I'm, is probably really wanting to ensure that there's a good quality job for his reputation and such, so we don't have that past engineer that may have let things slide by, so to speak.
Plus I carry a whooping stick in my truck now, so that's.
There you go.
Just emergency service.
All right, so. I was looking at the, the packet and I see that the, that the, the non collusion affidavit is not the one from section eighty-five point two-two of Title seventy-two. I want to read this. It says, any competitive bid submitted pursuant to the Public Competitive Bidding Act of nineteen seventy-four to a school, district, county, or municipality for furnishing of goods or services shall be accompanied by a, the sworn non collusion affidavit contained in section eighty-five point two-two of Title seventy-four, modified in wording to refer to the school, district, county, or municipality instead of the state. So it has to be that one worded with the only change being city instead of the state. Do we have that? That's what I was referring to the last time. I, I don't have a problem with the actual bid and all that stuff. I just want to make sure by law, we're supposed to have this. Do we have this?
That's what you stated.
I don't know if you have it or not.
It's the, the section eighty-five and.
Chris, go to page fifty-one, packet.
Yeah, but that's not the, the state one. That's a different one. That does not meet. This is the one that says we shall.
Well, they have the non collusion.
He's got it, Chris. That non collusion statute is substantial compliance, Chris.
But that has some verbiage in it that's different and not in the one we have.
So let me ask this.
He has the same package you got there. You can look it up.
Um, Chase, are we good with what we have?
I think you're good with it.
Okay, so our legal counsel thought that we're good.
I have, because Chris brought it up, we do have, it's not exactly the same, but I think that statute says substantial compliance. It doesn't say it has to be the exact same. This is the same spirit as that. I don't think there's an issue. But I have drafted and I'll send it to you, Courtney, so you guys have it, an updated one that is almost exactly with what he's reading. Because if we know it's not exact, why not make it closer? There's no reason to. But I do think for legal purposes, this is substantial compliance.
And just for the record, when we did that, and Terry, you were there when we did it, Dale, when we opened those bids this time, um, those bids were literally walked directly into the copier. Copies were made and copies were left here. And all those concerned parties, I know I called Mr. Gonthea and said those copies are here for, for review. And we've had possession of those copies.
Yours, you still have possession of them?
They are on Jay's, Jay's desk. So they are there for everybody to view right next to all the other bidding and contracting documents. That's a, a change that we made based on previous discussions. So, um, I'm going to say, since Chase is confident that we're, we're, we're good that we could probably move forward with our vote to accept that low bid.
So just for clarification, Chase, your legal opinion is trumping the legal opinion of our paralegal on the other end of the roster?
I don't want to say trumping, um.
Chris, show him your paper. Show him your paper.
My interpretation of the statute is substantial compliance. I think there's probably some case law that acts that up. Substantial compliance doesn't mean exactly. When court looks at substantial compliance, they're going to look at what's the spirit or the purpose of the statute. I think the purpose of the statute is to ensure non collusion. The wording and what we have ensures that.
Let's vote.
And your, your opinion will probably be the same when we get to the next item for the next project too.
I, I don't want to speculate, but.
Okay.
All right.
Call for the vote.
Yep. Call for the vote, he says.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gonthea?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw? Brishiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Item E, discussion and action to accept a bid from Eric and Sons Asphalt Service LLC in the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven, two forty-seven, ten for improvements to the cart paths at the golf course to be paid from Golf Capital Outlay Account four one, four one five, five four one one. One other bid was received from Ellsworth Construction in the amount of two hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight sixty-six.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion from Lamar and a second from Brown. Any discussion?
I have the same concern.
We will note that. Thank you. Call for the vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have discussion?
I, Chase, you didn't want to speculate.
Uh, if it says the same thing, I'll maintain my position.
Thank you.
Have we got money in the account?
Hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and four cents.
Okay. Let's call for that vote.
Gonthea?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you, Dale.
Item five, city attorney's report. And I will let everybody know, we, we'll have to jump to the addendum as soon as we get done here, so just be aware of that. Uh, item A, possible executive session for the purpose of confidential communication to city attorney and city bargaining committee regarding the status of and ongoing actions related to local thirty-five sixty-seven of the International Association of Firefighters, AFL, CIO, CLC, collective bargaining agreement negotiation consent, twenty-five, three oh seven B two, four, and ten.
So move.
Second.
Motion from Brishier and a second from Gonthea. Call for the move.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gonthea? Gantier?
Yes.
Am I joined as executive session?
Counsel, clerk in person. Take notes.
Am I...
Sure.
Yeah, please.
I'm sorry, who made?
The fudge you dropped off.
Oh, I dropped it off.
Did you make that?
I did.
It's gone, like most of it.
Is it real?
Well, I sat there this morning and it was just like...
I'll bring more.
Yeah, please do. All right, are we ready?
It is mildly addictive.
Okay. We will go to items five B, consider resuming regular session.
Motion.
No action taken during the sedative session. We got a motion from Rasheers and a second from Gauthier. Are you ready?
Yeah. Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Okay, we'll now go to the addendum one, possible action based on executive session regarding the status of and ongoing actions related to local 3567 and the International Association of Firefighters AFL CIO CLC collective bargaining agreement negotiation pursuant to 25307b 24 and 10.
Motion.
Second.
Motion for Brown, second from Rasheer. Call for move.
What action are we taking?
To approve.
Be more specific?
I need, yeah, I need you guys to...
So, to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Brooklyn...
For the mayor to sign it.
And the local 3567 of the International Association of Firefighters AFL CIO CLC effective July 1st, 2024 through...
You getting all that?
30th, 2025.
The video, hopefully.
Did you get it?
Terry, did you get all that?
Just read it here.
All right.
I saw motions to let him sign.
You may have to come back and watch the video for that one.
Thankfully, it's already written down in other places, so...
Well, when you're ready, then you can call for a second.
Brown, Rasheers, you guys are good with admitting it. Brown's not here.
Brown's not here.
Approved. Should I wait for Brown to confirm?
I think unfortunately, you have to wait.
Hang on, man.
He was the first, unfortunately.
Can you?
Yeah.
Do you have carpal tunnel yet, all that writing that you...
Uh, no, but by the end of my term, I'm sure I will.
It is Brown.
Are you good with admitting your motion to approve the CBA?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you like to stay for the voting portion of the evening?
Okay.
So, you're the holdup.
Nice, good. We can still go ahead and vote.
Okay. Uh, Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown stepped out, right? That's, he's stepping out, not...
Yes.
Okay. Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm gonna write down that he stepped out real quick.
All right. Tyler, you can come back.
Didn't know how far you'd walked in the last...
Okay. Item C, we're gonna go back to the regular agenda now. Item C on the attorney's report is possible executive session concerning the appointment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation. I'm gonna add to that, or the appointment of...
Appointment's already in there.
Is it in there?
Yes.
I did read that, I'm so sorry. Hannah Moore, 25307b 1.
Hannah Moore.
Second.
More Morris, sorry.
He's not good at reading, obviously.
Listen here.
Okay, so, I heard Shropshire, but I didn't hear a second, and Zach hasn't said it.
I'll say it.
Give it to Rasheer.
It's fine.
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Yeah.
Get well affected.
Veridich.
Second. Motion from Rasheer, second from Gauthier. Are you ready? Call for the vote.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Uh, possible action based on executive session concerning the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, resignation of Hannah Moore Morris, 25307B1.
Make a motion for the appointment of Hannah Moore Morris to Assistant City Clerk at Range F step four. Twenty-four, twenty-five page.
I'll second it, however, would you be willing to amend that to say that the appointment per the city, in accordance with their city ordinance, the mayor is the appointing official?
Yes.
And we're recommending and approving it, or he's recommending, we're approving?
Yes, with an anticipated start date of January 6th.
Yes. To fall in line with that pay period, so...
Good. Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Okay, um, we're going to item F, city was speaking. And so we're good because at the time, and now that that property is owned, we don't have to go back and, because we're already on our second go around, we should be okay. All right.
I do want to clarify that Shropshire meant waive the reading and approve this.
Correct. I think we need, where are we at with this? Call for the vote?
Yeah, unless there's other discussion.
Discussion on that. Mr. Schaefer, glad to be here, being that he's of older age and lives in a... He would be fine. He was at all the other meetings leading up to now and, and plead his case, so, with respect, I told him he did not need to be here tonight. Further discussion, if not, call for the vote.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Committee reports budget personnel, or chief. Or its insurance.
New Year's Eve.
You have stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
At least one thing.
All right, street maintenance.
That... Meeting, I believe, is scheduled for the day before Christmas Eve.
Uh, the 26th is when it's scheduled.
Oh, it's been moved to the 26th? Reason it didn't...
Uh, we have no unforeseeable business. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Motion.
I have a motion to be on to you and a second from Rasheer. Call for the vote.
Uh, Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Good. We will call to order the prior Public Works Authority, item two, approve the minutes of December 3rd, 2024 meeting.
Motion.
We had a motion from Gauthier, second from Choya. Call for the vote when you're ready.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
A motion from Brown and a second from...
Rasheers?
Rasheer. Call for the vote.
Uh, Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Merry Christmas. I gotta get with these...
Say again?
No. So, I don't...
Hey, Chris?
They were trying to reach out.
You all have your...